I will call the special meeting of the Dunsborough City Council to order at 8:00 PM on March 13th, 2019. We will start with your call, please.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Present.
Councilmember Keisler.
Here.
Councilmember Art.
Here.
You're okay.
Present. I will now stand for the flag salute and I will stop. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will now move into a trickle of the special agenda. If I'll just remind our council members tonight, at the regular city council meeting last week, we had put the rate study for sewer and solid waste off for a special meeting, which is why we are here today. Is there any issues with the agenda?
No objection. I make the motion to approve the special agenda.
Right, thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We will move forward with the approved special agenda. We will now move into item number five, which is announcements and public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. We please ask that each speaker keep it to three minutes for tonight. And please know that we will have a regular meeting next week, Thursday. So if anything has come up in the past week, please let us know.
Leslie Wilde, 6200 Eleanor Street. I just came from the planning commission meeting and I gave everyone a little pep talk and encouraged the planning commission to be a little bit more robust than they have been in the last few years. And asked that if a planning commission member comes and lobbies you and says, "You know, I was looking through the Dunsborough Municipal Code," or a member of the community came and asked me if I could look into something, if they want to put it on the agenda, that the council say, "Go for it." Let's get more out of the planning commission than just approving paint colors and signage. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the general public comment and then move into our only business tonight, which is rates for the sewer and solid waste. I'll hand it over to Paul Ritter from Pace.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Y'all have your staff report in front of you and I'm speaking for Mr. Branigan. But I believe Mark's intention was is that we've had a series of public meetings. We had our town hall meeting last week. And I think Mark would just like to open things up to the city council and basically seek direction for how you'd like staff to proceed at this point. In his staff report, he provided a kind of a timeline, a potential timeline, if the city were to desire moving forward with Prop 218 proceedings. He shows some dates in the staff report, terms of setting, public hearing, that sort of thing. Or if council would like staff to go a different direction, or do something different, or consider something different. I think we're all ears. So the purpose of tonight is just to receive direction from the council regarding both rate studies.
All right, thank you, Paul. I know that Councilmember Art has stated on a previous occasion he has quite a few questions. So I'm going to start with the other members. Are there any shortlist questions that you have for Paul before we move to Peter and public comment?
Not for myself. I would like to thank everybody involved with getting this this far. Especially Paul, I know he had more hair when we started, so I appreciate everything you do. So, and Mr. Art, your time on this, getting us here too, appreciate you.
You too, you too.
We agree.
Mostly, Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan, if you have anything?
Good.
All right, Peter, would you like to ask your questions now, or would you like to take public comment? And then, you know, because I know some of your questions go into discussion. How would you like to proceed?
I would like to divide our decision-making on sewer from our decision-making on solid waste. And I ask, do we have vote-ready resolutions for both tonight? What is it we have before us to vote on?
I believe, based on the staff report, we are providing direction for staff and then the sample timeline, which is just after the agenda here. So ideally, what would happen, and Paul, please clarify if I'm wrong, at the 3/21/19 meeting, we would be presented a final draft of sewer and solid waste rates and then you would set the date for the public hearing. And then on April 1st, we would mail Prop 218 protest notice to property owners. And then on May 16th, we would hold the public hearing in consideration of protests. My understanding tonight is we are looking for a motion to move forward with this timeline. Like I said, I will pose it to the rest of the council. Would we like to separate the two items into sewer, solid waste? Because I know solid waste may be a little bit more contentious.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So if we can separate it, the sewer, solid waste, let's start with sewer, since that seems to be the easier of the two as far as question. Do you have any other clarifying questions for Paul before you move into public comment about the sewer rate study?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to have two different public comments. This first one is for the sewer rate study, so please keep your comments just to the sewer, solid waste. And I will give three minutes for that. So I will open the public comment related to that procedure.
I'm still Leslie Wilde. I still have that joke from Peter. He made it earlier today. You and your three minutes. I'm the only one here. I should be able to go, I should get everybody's three minutes. The only other thing about sewer is, in 2010, I think was the last time the council raised sewer rates. And if you go back and look at the, whatever it is that makes the argument why they have to be raised, one of the things literally says in that is that they have to raise the sewer rates because there's no other way to get any other money. There's no money available from any other source. And the only way we can pay for this sewer improvement project, and it was necessary, as Mario says, "We were one rancid on the way from brown turds floating down the river." So they really did have to fix this thing. But they said that one of the reasons they had to raise everybody's rates was because there was no other funding source. It was very contentious. This place was packed. It led to a recall campaign against Peter and Mario, who were successfully recalled. And when the new council members came on, one of them named Chris Rainey, I'm not a big fan of Chris Rainey, but he picked up the phone and he called Sacramento. He called the legislator and said, "Is there any way we can get money for our sewer improvement project?" And he said, "Yeah, there's a bunch of money." So the city applied and they got this huge forgiveness loan that helped pay for it. So sometimes us ratepayers are like, when we're told that we have to raise our rates because there's no other way, and then we find out later, maybe there was a way. We'd like to just think that you keep that in mind, that people are very worried about our rates going up. And I hope that there's other ways to pay for this besides on the backs of the ratepayers.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment related to the sewer 218 rate study, Prop 218 process? All right, I will close the public comment as it relates to the sewer. Paul, we want to just address Leslie's comment about the needs for the rate, please.
Sure, yeah, it's multi-fold, obviously. You know, one of the primary drivers is the fact that expenditures exceed revenues at this time in the enterprise fund. A large part of the rate increase will go toward increasing revenues to offset expenditures. However, the city would like to do a collection system project, and that's built in as well. I think I mentioned in the public presentations that there's quite a bit of other work to do and it's basically to replace old, worn-out infrastructure. And, you know, we named a few projects in there that we don't have built into a financial plan right now because we're already asking to raise the rates substantially. And I think there's a reasonably good chance that the city could get some grant money, especially for the treatment plant improvements, based on what the state wants to fund right now.
Question?
Sure.
Do you know of a phone number you can call up and ask somebody and they'll give you a couple million dollars?
Well, you know, we've been intimately involved with all the funding for several years now. And I think the city has obtained three half-million-dollar planning grants for water and sewer. The funding available is highly competitive. And I think the city did well to get the three planning grants that it did. And you've actually done a lot and set yourself up for future funding, whether it be grant or loan. But it's highly competitive and that money's gone and going quickly. And so the remaining funds, the state would really like to concentrate on treatment plant-oriented projects, not collection piping projects. And so that's why we elected to fold the collection project into the rates and hope for grant, continue to work toward grant on the wastewater treatment plan. Now with that said, there's still tens of thousands of feet of old clay sewer lines in the city that have well exceeded their useful life. They just haven't created the level of maintenance issue to the city. They haven't demonstrated extremely high leakers. And so they're put off a little bit. But the need is not going to go away and it's not going to get any less expensive to do that.
And the proposed, the draft rate study for sewer does take into account facilitating and maintaining a consistent rate reoperator as well, correct?
It does, yes.
Some of those loans are grant.
Right, yeah. Blake pointed out that some of the financing that we've anticipated is a grant loan financing. And based on the state's direction to us in terms of what they would like to fund, we believe your best option is a USDA grant loan combination. The USDA grant component goes up to about 30% grant, which is about the max. And we've assumed that the city would be able to get that for the collection system project. So it's built in. So we'll put some pressure on USDA to say, "It has to be 30% or we can't do the project."
Just to be clear, that 30% is what we pay back?
No, that's a grant component that USDA would provide grant for that you don't have to pay back.
Maybe shoot for 50.
Just for 30% of the project?
Yes, that's right.
Maybe shoot for 50 and like 30 is what we actually want, but if they give us 45, that's cool.
Yeah.
Always, always shoot higher than what you actually need.
There you go.
But Peter, anything for sewer?
Well, at least a bit of perspective, swinging off of what Leslie said. We have a member of the planning commission here. I was perfectly happy to lead the city 10 years ago in starting this long journey to rebuild our water and sewer infrastructure. And the community, when I walked onto the city council in 2008, there were three empty seats and nobody wanted to fill them. They were begging for people. There was no election. They found three dupes, including me, to sit here and receive the news from Pace as to what lay ahead for our water and sewer system, having, in the words of the Mount Shasta city manager, "Kick the can down the road as long as we can kick the can down the road if I can catch up with this." So here we are, 12 years down the road. And I think we have done much better in the dialogue with our citizens and ratepayers that it's not for free. Yes, it's a gravity-fed water system. And if you don't appreciate the irony that we're celebrating in our last meeting, our water up in the Mosque area is considered the fourth best in the world, and yet we can't comply with the state discharge standards at the sewer end and we're putting our improperly-treated sewage into the headwaters of the Sacramento. I hope before I'm done with my four-year term that the city has invested some money in alternatives to discharging our sewage into the upper sack. There's only two communities that do it, Mount Shasta and us. And I have to believe what we're doing tonight doesn't even begin to address $14 million in needed expenditures. How much?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Yeah. Not even begin to address that. We will never catch up, even if our community grows to 5,000 people with a robust business autonomy. But this is what we inherited. And this is what we are charged on behalf of everybody to deal with, not looking in the rearview mirror, but toward discharge standards that the state of California, they impose on us, they will get tighter and tighter and tighter. So I'm happy to support all the hard work that Pace did. The city staff did hardly any work at all. This is us investing in Pace as our experts to get us to this point with a master plan and a lot of deferred work. Though we are better off now than we were 10 years ago, so I'm ready to support it.
All right. Is there any other points of discussion on this matter? Seeing none, I will undertake a motion to move forward with the sample timeline that's presented to us in the staff report, beginning with the presentation of a final draft of the sewer rate study and set the date for the public hearing at the March 21st meeting.
I shall move.
Right, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Right, there's been a motion, a second to move forward with the sample timeline beginning with the March 21st meeting. That was moved by Councilmember Deutsch, second by Councilmember Keisler. Is there any other further discussion on the vote? Seeing none, we'll move. All those in favor of moving forward, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, one now. One, two, go.
By the way, I would like to compliment Mr. Art. I thought that was well said.
Yeah, you know, I like when he said, "But we inherited it." It's like, "Well, it's good."
Thank you.
Well, I've worked for the Republican Utilities Commission my whole career. Why is there a Republican Utilities Commission? No politician wants to increase utility rates.
No.
Leave the dirty work to someone else.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so per Councilmember Art, we have separated these two things and I have solid rate, waste rate study is the next one up. Prior to talking about this, I do want to share some information that has changed since the past couple of meetings, is that the Cisco Economic Development Council after our last meeting did take some of our input seriously. One of the things that wasn't a goal for this year, but was a goal for last year, was related to green waste services. And I did have a phone conversation today in a meeting with one of the members of SEBC. They took county out and throws me out. So the Economic Development Council will be at the quarterly or biannual, I can't remember how many times, I think we need twice a year to be biannual, biannual?
Biannual.
Who cares? It's twice a year. I'm tired. So there is a Cisco County Solid Waste Meeting next week on the 20th. And so the Economic Development Council will be sponsoring a green waste item to discuss on what that's going to take. Per our conversation, the Economic Development Council does see it as an economic factor for the county. So just to share that with you before we go into this item, I know that was a point of contention. But there are other forces at work looking at the regional aspect of green waste. And then I have also been personally working with my colleagues up in the city of Mount Shasta about, you know, some shorter-term green waste programs for the safety of the community and what we would be able to do in conjunction with them to cut the cost that could happen to the residents or the city, depending on how those projects pan out. So I just wanted to share that before we go into solid waste, that there may be some things coming up in the next year, actively looking at a larger regional green waste program. So.
Madam Mayor.
I figured that was important to the conversation.
Thank you, Louis Dewey.
Yes, yeah. So I just wanted to preface that with a conversation, because I felt it was important because it might be some of the points you bring up, that it could be coming up here.
Madam Mayor, I also like to add one other thing. I did talk with, to Mark Branigan, city manager, about the possibility of lining up one of those, what we had in the past of annual drop your junk off, but in this case, make it tailored to drop your green waste off and do it about the time when the fire season would be at its worst, to get as much of that out as possible. So I'll be pursuing that with him to see if we can find something there too.
Yeah, we'll talk about it after the meeting. I'd like to get back on to this because it's moved very quickly in the last week, based on conversations. But do you have any clarifying questions for the solid waste rate study right now? Or would you like to move to public comment and then move into discussion?
Either way, fine.
Okay. I'm going to open up the public comment first, related to the solid waste rate study. And Leslie, because you are the only one here.
I am.
You will.
Would you like an additional minute to form?
Help me out.
All right, you can have four, because I know you have a little bit more questions than this one and no one else's.
Okay. And she'll give this for the five councilmembers. This is just a printout of, when Proposition 218 passed in 1996, what it did was it added a couple of chapters to the California Constitution. And this is just the printout that is about fees, not taxes, but fees. And I'm going to refer to it a little bit, but I just want to start by saying, and I know that Bruce and Dave know this story over and over again, but y'all have some new folks, so we get to retell it again. 100 years ago, I was on the city council and I was on the finance committee. And I only get three minutes, so I will just say that I didn't want to be on the finance committee, but I was forced onto it. So there I was, on a finance committee meeting, at a meeting with a CPA auditor going over the results of an audit, of the annual audit. And at the end of the audit, he said, he closed it up and he had spent an hour, my eyes were watering, talking about finances and all the different things. And he said, "You need to do something about your solid waste enterprise fund." And I said, "Which one is that?" And Brenda Baines, our city manager, goes, "Garbage." And I said, "Okay, it's garbage fund." And I said, "Well, what's the problem with it?" And he said, "Well, it's almost half a million dollars." And I still, I didn't understand, is that a problem? And he explained, "It shouldn't have a surplus." He said, "If you want to have a small reserve, that's fine, but it should not have a surplus." He goes, "There's something wrong with it." And he said, "You need to look at your rates and figure out where it came from. Where did this giant surplus come from?" And at that moment, the city manager volunteered that they had big plans for this enterprise, this surplus. She rattled off all the things that they were going to buy, you know, a snowplow. And she just had a whole list of things. And he said, "You can't do that." I was like, "Trump, wrong." He said, "You can't do that." And I said, "Well, why? Wait, why? Why can't we do that?" And he said, "You can only spend it on what you collected it for, and you collected it for curbside garbage." And he said, "So, so there you go." And then he left. And I emailed him, because I didn't understand what we could do. And he had, I forgot, he had also said, "You can give it back. You can rebate it, or you can do something called a holiday. You could take a garbage holiday, where people just don't have to pay as much for their bill." It's kind of what's going on right now. But there was a caveat that what you'd be doing is giving people that live here now a subsidized rate, subsidize the people that paid for it, going back to 2004. So, long story short, a couple of years went by and the council didn't do either one of those things. So it may have led to a lawsuit that has my name on it, and you guys know that. But what that also led to was that the council did lower them, did lower them to $16.44. And I just want to go, one of the things that it says, Proposition 218, when it comes to fees, and I had to do the homework. I had no idea what Prop 218 was, so I did my homework. And the three big things, the two that the city at Dunsborough breaks the most, is the revenues derived from the fee or charge can't exceed the funds, and they were charging too much, and the revenues derived from the fee can't be used for any purpose other than what the fee is imposed. And my issue with your current solid waste plans that you have for the new rates is that you wanted to use it for tree trimming and street sweeping. And that you have been actually doing that in violation of Prop 218, in violation of California Constitution, going back for, I guess, a long time, for a number of years. And what the problem I have with that is, Peter referred to it once as an odd victory. He said, "I achieved an odd victory by getting the city to agree that they couldn't charge those things to the solid waste enterprise fund." And to me, it's not an odd victory, it's following the law. The law, an auditor told me, "You can't do that. You're violating not a statute, not a policy, not a regulation, but the California Constitution." And here's the thing I say over and over again, vulnerable populations depend on affordable utilities to live. The garbage and the sewer and the water is all coupled together. And when people can't pay it, they have their water shut off. And that could be a health hazard for people with amputations and all that.
All right.
And as I'm walking away, I'm just going to say, "Your solid waste study says you're going to mail ballots, so I hope you do it. You should mail the ballots."
I give you 30 extra seconds.
Awesome.
So if anyone would like four minutes and 32 seconds of time.
They don't listen and they won't listen.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone? All right, you aware? We will now move into discussion on this one. Does anyone have any discussion points or questions for Paul before Councilmember Art? All right, Tina?
Well, it's almost the same. And for those of us that were on the Sewer and Solid Waste Committee and have spent a lot of time discussing both enterprise fund and utility function, we tried to operate by consensus, and I thought we were in agreement that yes, beyond the scope of the study for solid waste were the following issues. Did we look at ways to reduce the cost of Dunsborough's solid waste operation? And I believe the answer is no, we did not. All we ever talked about is the tradition, we got Clemmons. And what we typically do is take the Clemmons contract and we escalate it or we do whatever we do, and that's it. So the public comment at the town hall, any number of people asked, "Did you bid it out? Did you try to competitively determine what's the least expensive way to get rid of our solid waste, from green waste to cans, to bottles, to you name it?" And I think the fair answer is, no, we did not.
We weren't tasked with it.
Stick with me. Is the city going to stop kicking the can down the road on recycling, green waste, et cetera? I thought we agreed the answer was no, we're not going to do that anymore. And yet, in the final study, those issues simply got downgraded to beyond the scope of the solid waste study, and that's it. And I don't think that's what we agreed to. Louis Dewey and I are very sure that's not what we agreed to. But that's the way it's presented at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Sure.
May I have a question for Mr. Ritter?
Go ahead.
Based on the calculations, how much each month are we going to have to raise the rates if we put off getting the rates raised by July 1st? In other words, if we end up putting off so we can take a few months to go into these deep studies and solve all these problems, how much more will the rates have to go up because we waited three months? And this is something that Mr. Art is aware of, that if we continue on the path, we will run out of money in two years. And the rates we will have to charge will probably be double of what we have right now.
That's not true. Those ladies, please.
So that is the reason that we decided it was imperative for us to move forward with the information we had while we took the time to do the thoughtful presentation and exploration. And it's already kicked off, because the mayor has already said she's talking with the EDC. And I've already said I was talking with the Way to Do It. That is the reason we didn't do it. We have money that's wasted every time we wait to put these rates into effect. That's stats.
Councilmember Deutsch, I believe you have a question for Paul, can we please repeat it? So that's the delivery there.
Yeah, my understanding of the question is if we delay rate increases for a few months, what could happen? You know, how much would the rates need to go up? And I don't know that I really have that answer, but Councilman Deutsch did express that the fund is going about $108,000 in the hole every year. And you've got about $200,000 and change in the reserve fund. So in about two years, the fund would be theoretically out of money. The problem with allowing the fund to run out of money is you've got to make up that $108,000 in one-year rate increases or the fund will continue to run in the red. And that's equivalent to about a 45% rate increase in one year to make. And that's equivalent to about a 45% rate increase in one year to make that up. And kind of maybe commenting a little bit on Councilman Art's comments pertaining to the study. I recall all those discussions that we had for sure. And I thought we kind of collectively agreed that a lot of those things were probably beyond maybe the scope of the current study and beyond my ability to see through the end. And I thought we had kind of agreed that we would continue, or the committee or city would continue to explore the green waste options and trying to get a more favorable garbage collection contract. But for the purpose of this study, the idea was, in my mind, to try to start correcting the rates so that if the city can't put together a new contractor and a green waste collection and a recycling program within 10 years, that you've started to move your rates in a direction that you can salvage the enterprise. So I think it kind of boils down to, you know, from the city's perspective, can you put it all together in two years?
How about two months?
I, yeah, probably not, but.
I'm just thinking of, you know, the recycling, the green waste program, the negotiating with other refuse haulers. You know, it sounds like a long time, and maybe it is, but I think the council, that's really what you're asking yourself, is can you put that all together in about two years?
Blake, or Paul, how, where are we at with Clemmons contract as far as year goes? And then do we have inflation factor in there, or would we anticipate rate increase in that contract?
Sure, yeah, great question. So the current contract was signed in 91, and it was a four-year term with extensions. And all of those extensions have all been the CPI. So from 91 until now, it's gone up just by the CPIs. And further to that, it's like a page and a half contract. So.
So when does it end?
We've been extending it for these periods while work has been done or tried to get done in renegotiating the contract. But it takes a lot of time, and there are other things that come onto the docket. So we've been looking at it.
It's literally the same age as I am.
It's a primitive document.
Literally. I was born in February of 1991, and we have a contract that is literally the same age as I am.
Yes.
You young wippersnapper.
That's not that old.
Okay. Yeah.
And you're worth much more than a CPI.
Well, hey, hey, and it's also extended every year.
As it sits right now, it is, maybe not much longer based on how I have worked out this.
Oh, yeah, and so there is notice, we have heard that there's some extenuating expenditures that the waste hauler has informed us about.
Yeah.
Another thanks to insurance costs and things are.
So.
So.
So from your professional perspective, what would taking the 218 out of the mind, out of our purview right now as far as the contract code? Because the contract is really the important thing right now. Because I understand, you know, based on Councilmembers, Councilmember Art's concerns, which I think are valid. I think there's two issues at hand right now. One, we're not collecting enough for the current service that we have. Two, we need our service to get better, to meet the goals that our residents are asking us to meet, and to just be better students of the earth from an environmental standpoint, which theoretically could reduce our garbage rates, but we don't know that yet. There's no guarantee that moving to a composting program will lower garbage rates based on the fact that we have a contract that's 28 years old.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
First of all, with all due respect, I don't think you heard me propose delaying the adoption of solid waste rates.
I, yeah, I understand.
I did not propose that. Well, I'm talking to my colleague.
Okay.
At the public town hall meeting, we heard testimony from Mary Padilla on behalf of those citizens that are low-income or fixed income, that it's all fine if we solve our problems by raising water rates and sewer rates and solid waste rates, but if they become unaffordable to the community, that really doesn't work. The next comment is several people got up and spoke at the town hall about ecology, how they think about resources, and the city of Waireca put their business out for competitive bidding. The community of McLeod said goodbye to their contract hauler. As Leslie correctly pointed out, it's a combination of the cost of pickup, the cost of moving it to the place where it gets tipped, and the tipping fees. Those are hard costs. And this is in a community that does nothing about recycling and green waste, et cetera, that's too much for us. The third point. Carol, Leslie, this nice lady and I were all in the planning commission meeting earlier this evening. Our lead judge, a city planner, we are way behind what the state expects us to do in terms of vegetation management. We're not FEMA compliant, we're not state compliant. When you said things are moving much more quickly for vegetation management, and I told you before, the fire safety council is meeting, our five citizens that we appointed last week for the natural resource recovery committee are meeting, and Chief Padilla said he would like the city to adopt the Lake Chastina district ordinance that makes people responsible for fire safe margins. I'm happy to support that. But the leadership of the council needs to talk to the leadership of the planning commission. We are way behind. So to cut to the chase, if I was to support the increases in solid waste, I would like the city to pass a resolution that devotes between $30,000 and $50,000 beginning in fiscal year July 1, 2019, 2020, to what we talked to at our committee. We'll work with PACE Engineering, we'll retain a consultant. The consultant will advise us and the rate payers, can we do this more cheaply? Should we go out to pay better than that? If we are going to start a green wasting jumping operation with the rest of Cisco County and our neighborhood communities and the fire chief, what does that look like? It's crystal clear, we have no staff that's with us. So we can either kick the can down the road and say it's too much for us, or we can listen to the citizens and say, "Let's get through it."
If I could, one more, and then I'll yield. What I'm trying to say is that we're here to do a specific task. We're here to recognize that our expenses right now, in real world, are higher than what we're taking in. With that in mind, what I'm saying is that taking time right now to look at the big picture is not going to solve that problem, it's going to make it worse. And that's the only thing I'm trying to say is we're here tonight to move things forward. And every month, every meeting we wait, it's going to be a higher rate increase on the people.
And my, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying is the great speakers got it. 1, 7, 19. And by 1, 7, 19, we will take the advocates of green wasting, the airport, the fire safety council, the disaster committee, this is number one on all their minds. So go ahead and do the rate increase schedule for July 1. At the same time, bring it to the community and everybody that depends on fire safety. You know, we're going to do something.
So just for the general public ones, 7, 2019 is July 1, 2019? Just go by the day, then the month, and the year?
I do it the best way I can.
Americans are weird and go with the month first. So just to clarify that, because at first I was like.
You're absolutely right. 7, 1.
7, 1, thank you. It's not a neat correct way.
No, but, but it's important because work keeps being made that I'm trying to get in the way of making the solid waste fund solvent. I am not. But you tell me where the tree trimming function is going. What is the city going to provide in green waste services starting next week? How much have we appropriated in the budget? Because it's no wonder. This is the ironic victory. We have taken the cost for the city to do tree trimming and green waste. It's out of the sewage fund, and it's unadmittedly.
I don't see it as a victory, to be honest with you.
I don't care, the point is it's unpleasant.
Councilmember Art.
Critic.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Hi, Mike, Adam, back on the floor. The future endeavors you're discussing have yet to be allocated or budgeted. Have yet to be budgeted primarily because fiscal year 2019, 2020 has yet to be, a budget has yet to be adopted by the council. And when we do see versions of that budget before us, now that will be the time to address where we allocate resources for these much-needed projects like researching green waste and curbside recycling and tree trimming. Quite frankly, we take it out of the fund, it has to go somewhere, we have to do it to maintain a fire-safe environment. But that's the place to have that conversation, and I'm more than willing, in fact, I'm eager to have that conversation when the time comes to allocate that fiscal year's resources.
My response to that is.
Again, there have been other people interested in green waste, other cities that may be able to cut costs for the vegetation management, that is a separate thing from the enterprise fund at this point. And that's why I wanted to bring that up before we even started this, because like I said, I think there's two things that we're worried about. And again, I think we are on the same page for most of those two things, but they're getting muddled into the same one. Right now, anything that we do for green waste management or vegetation of this year is going to come out, we're going to have to come out as a general fund appropriation.
Unless we can attract some of the hundreds of millions of dollars the state of California is making available and the federal government is making available to make us fire safe. Who is going to apply for those funds?
And again, that's a separate issue, I think, than what's in front of us now. Councilmember Keisler, if you have anything to discuss with this one?
No, I'm, I'm just going with the flow. I see both points, but I do, and I've been playing it a long time, and I know where we're at. I know what we got to do. It sucks, but it's just a fact. That's, I'm ready to make a motion, but I'm sure you guys don't want to.
Go ahead, you can make a motion whenever you would like.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize that, given the Proposition 218 process for the solid waste with the same things that you had read before, 313, 19, discussion of rate study progress, community outreach, data provider actions. On 321, we'll present final draft of the solid waste rate study and set draft, set date for public hearing. On 41, we'll make a Proposition 218 process notice to proper owners, property owners and customers of recorded, of record. Tell them, Tyler. And on 516, public hearing and consideration approaches.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
No, second.
There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to move forward with the sample timeline presented in the staff report as read by Councilmember Keisler placing a private saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Abstentions? Motion carries. So that was what was in front of us for new business tonight. And again, pertaining to the discussion that we had, there are a couple of things coming up in the next week, so I hope to report back when I believe Councilmember Art, will you be able to attend the solid waste meeting next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. So hopefully we will be able to have a little bit more discussion at the next regular council meeting about the green waste situation and vegetation management. Is that okay from the council?
What did you say about meeting or what's saying?
Uh, no, not you.
Okay, good.
Just Peter. Not you, you're good.
I'm good.
I think that's a good team, or you got to go, I think that'll be a good team. Good, not speed with you making it happen.
So we'll come back with a couple of things there. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll do it. Take everybody to your time.
All those in favor of adjournment placing a private saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.